Good evening and welcome to the August 21st meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. John Turewilleger, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let each of us pray in our own way. Please protect and watch over those who protect us in seen and unseen ways. We ask for your help that our country become more unified, less loud, less "me" and more[39.29][39.29]"we." Help us make our differences our strengths. Help us realize being wrong or right is not a fault. Help us make quiet, confident decisions that are best for our community. We thank you for the blessings of self, family, community, and our nation. In your name we give thanks. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the August 7th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, August 7, 2017. Committee reports. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared to modify a loan to Troy Community Works regarding the building at 1-3 East Main Street. Law and Ordinance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing an agreement with the Pink Ribbon Girls related to an event on the public square. Personnel Committee reported regarding restructuring of positions within the utilities operation to be more efficient and also to adjust the salary of the street foreman. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to provide for an assessment equalization board to be appointed and for a meeting date. Resolution Number R 33, 2017, amending loan to Troy Community Works for assistance for building repair, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R 34, 2017, appointing assessment equalization board, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O 20, 2017, an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number O 21, 2017, adjusting certain salaries, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O 22, 2017, adjusting certain salaries, was given first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 12:00 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to adopt. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee? Yes. Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
The Community and Economic Development Committee has the report this evening. Chairman, Mr. Twist.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Committee members Swazer and Twist met on August 14th to consider the petition filed on behalf of Scott and Kara Strayer for the annexation of 1.952 acres with the address of 2900 Mckegge Road. Based on the state law section under which this annexation petition was filed and qualifies, there's a very short timeline for the council to consider three separate pieces of legislation addressing what services the municipal corporation would provide to any parcel within the city, including that proposed for the annexation, a statement of buffering requirements, and legislation consenting or objecting to the annexation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by the state law related to the Strayer annexation of 1.952 acres from Concord Township located at 2900 Mckegge Road. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, we do support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair William Twist.
Are there any questions from council on this?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Turewilleger.
We have recently had a lot of stuff dealing with emergency legislation. Could there be some clarification as to why these items are emergency requests?
Mr. Titerington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you see in the detailed report, we are required by state law to exercise certain activities within 20 days of when the petition is filed with the county. And so, given the fact that there's not 20 days in which time to have three readings, have the committee meeting, and then at least not, well, and then allow the 30-day non-emergency period to pass before legislation becomes effective, it was necessary for emergency to be used.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The Law and Ordinance Committee has one liquor license application tonight. Mr. Swazer?
Yes, Madam President. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of the stock transfer of the existing D5F permit that has been issued to Smith's Boathouse Restaurant, LLC, 439 North Elm Street. The police department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the application.
Thank you. We now open the meeting for citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Then we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to please read Resolution R 35, 2017.
Resolution Number R 35, 2017, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 1.952 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the Strayer annexation located at 2900 Mckegge Road, and this is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 36, 2017.
Resolution Number R 36, 2017, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 1.952 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is also the Strayer annexation, 2900 Mckegge, a companion piece to the previous legislation, first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 37, 2017.
Resolution Number R 37, 2017, resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 1.952 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation required for an annexation, also the Strayer annexation, 2900 Mckegge Road, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 38, 2017.
Resolution Number R 38, 2017, resolution, amending Resolution Number R 34, 2017, establishing a new meeting date for the assessment equalization board and declaring an emergency. The previously set meeting has to be changed due to the inability of one of the members to attend, so this is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read Ordinance O 23, 2017.
Ordinance Number O 23, 2017, ordinance repealing Ordinance Number O 20, 2017, and authorizing the use of public areas for the "Paint the Town Pink with PRG" event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordnances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer subject to the issuance of proper permits by the State of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls, Inc., therefore, and declaring an emergency. This now establishes the event of the Pink Ribbon Girls for October 13 instead of October 6, otherwise that is the same legislation previously passed, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Turewilleger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
There are none.
Mayor Bemish, do you have any comments this evening?
Just a few. Mayor's concert last night, for those who attended, I think you had a lot of smile on your face, it was well-attended. I estimated 2,000 to 3,000 people were down in the square. The talent pool was fantastic, and I think those who were down on Prowlty Plaza in our downtown were very, very pleased with the concert. Heard a lot of good things. School's open. As an educator, I gotta put the plug in that. That'll be Wednesday, and you know, there'll be a lot of kids excited about it, maybe a few not so excited, but regardless, it does behoove all of us to be very careful as we motor down the streets, that the young people will be heading to different schools. So, think safety. Big one coming up, another great activity is the Air Force Band-Affight. They join us on Sunday at 7:00 at Treasure Island Amphitheater. It should be a wonderful time, and I hope a great turnout goes with the Air Force Band-Affight. They've been here for many, many years. And I'll defer to Tom Kendall, but I will say about Be the Match, this is something that we offer here that big cities have done, and through the efforts of the Kendall family, we've been able to bring that to Troy. Now, I'll defer to Tom, and he can share what that's all about, but a big compliment goes to Tom for his efforts in making that happen. So, I think I've covered all my bases. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titerington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Kerber, any comments?
Mrs. Baker, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council members tonight? I guess, Mr. Kendall, I want you to kick this off.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mike, for at least the buildup on it. Last time I mentioned this because this coming Saturday will be the Be the Match Run-Walk and Cycle will be at Treasure Island. You know, just because you haven't signed up yet doesn't mean you can't. We will be still doing sign-ups on Saturday morning, beginning at 8:00. Ceremonies begin at 9:00, and the race itself starts at 10:00. If you're riding a bike, though, you can start any time from 7:30 on to ride a bike then in the event. Again, the funding for this goes to Be the Match, which is dedicated to finding bone marrow matches or stem cell matches for those with blood-borne cancers. It is very vital. If you don't want to run or be a part of the bike or walk, you do have the opportunity to save a life also. We will be taking swabs of those who would like to be put on the registry to be a potential donor for a person in need. And if you come and run, you have the opportunity to go against Captain Sean. He's running again in his second year, so... But, yes, please come out, support. And again, if you don't want to run, you can donate, but Run, Roll, or Blood will be there for entertainment, and there'll be a lot of other activities and awards given out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have any comments or questions this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Heath?
Just want to say thank you to everybody that participated in the 2017 Festival of Nations. That was this past weekend. Huge success. The weather was perfect for that. Wasn't too hot, no rain, good breeze was coming off. So, because of that and because of a lot of the work that the committee put on, we were estimating between 4,000 and 5,000 people came through on the day, which was amazing. The entertainment was phenomenal. We had a national act there called the Tamboritzens, and they have played in New York and Las Vegas, and now they can add Troy to their repertoire of that. So, we're excited to have that. I think we're going to continue to try to expand and grow that even this coming next year, so everybody put that on their schedule. The Philippines won Best Food, and it was really good stuff out there. So, I appreciate everybody. I know the mayor's involved with that, and Mr. Funderberg does a great job at helping organize everything over there, Jerry Mullins, which is the city as well. There's a lot of work that goes in on that side, so thank you to everybody for doing that. I better also say my wife is the chair of that. I don't want to sleep on the couch tonight, so I'm going to say that she did a great job at running that and keeping it going in a good direction. Come out next year. It's going to be good.
Thank you. Any other council members' comments? Is there any comments from any one in the city staff this evening? Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions?
Good evening. My name is Deb Jung. I reside at 975 Oak Hill Court, and my concern this evening is the speed limit on Troyer Vanna Road between North Market and the city limits as you go out Troyer Vanna. If you're not familiar with the location of Oak Hill Court, it would be North Market Street, right on Troyer Vanna, right on Maple Crest, and a quick left on Oak Hill Court. So, my street runs parallel to Troyer Vanna at that point, very close, you know, just very close to Troyer Vanna Road. The speed limit is, right now, is 45 miles per hour. A number of years ago, when the Honey Creek development was a possibility, I know I approached council at meetings at that time with various concerns about the development, but one was the speed limit out there and the traffic and, you know, the fact that the speed limit was 45. If you've ever approached Troyer Vanna Road on Maple Crest, you'll realize that it's difficult to see at that intersection when you pull out. And right now, there are some trees that kind of impede the division as you look east going out Troyer Vanna Road when you're sitting on Maple Crest waiting to turn. Most everyone comes out Maple Crest and turns left because they're coming out Maple Crest and turning left to go down to Market Street. And so, that's, you know, you're looking to make a left-hand turn. And there are some trees that are there that are not helping, but even if the trees were gone, the road curves. Troyer Vanna makes a little bit of a curve to the right, right at the top of that little hill, and it's very hard to see. Now, if traffic obeyed the speed limit and they were coming over that little hill at 45 miles per hour, wouldn't be so bad, but there are a lot of vehicles that do not obey the speed limit, appears to me, living there, even sitting out on my deck, which overlooks Troyer Vanna Road, and watching the traffic go up and down through that area. There are a lot of vehicles going what appears to be a lot faster than the speed limit. So, you're waiting to pull out, and you're looking right, left, right, left, and you always look, instead of left, left, you look right, left, to make sure there's nobody coming over that hill before you pull out. So, the speed limit at one point had been lowered to 35 when, you know, this whole possibility of Honey Creek was in our future, and then it was raised back up to 45. So, I'm here to request consideration of having that speed limit lowered back down to 35 again, just to make it a lot safer. My grandson, who's a 17-year-old driver, I had to yell at him, "Stop." He pulled out and stopped just before a huge construction truck came over that hill. We would have been killed. So, that's my, you know, comment for consideration this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Titerington was taking notes, so thank you very much for calling that to our attention. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments?
Mr. Connerd, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. We are becoming a bicycle city, but I think it would be to the advantage of the citizens if the police department would regulate and watch not only the children on these bikes, but adults riding these bikes that don't stop at stop signs or anything else, just keep buzzing through. There was two women out there on Dorset and Surrey, and they just went right by, and I yelled at them, I said, "You didn't stop." And they just smiled and kept on going. So, I think it would be to our advantage if the police department would, because the young kids, I can understand them doing it, but if they would stop them and maybe yell at them a little bit or scare them a little bit, might make them better drivers when they get behind that big weapon on those roads. And the adults, I don't know why they're doing it, but I, you know, I'm thinking, now, they are supposed to stop at stop signs, right?
Correct.
Now, on the bike paths or the designated bike areas, they still have to stop at stop signs and stuff, or...
They have to. If they're on the streets, they have to obey the same traffic laws as drivers do.
Well, I wish, you know, I think it would be to everybody's advantage if somebody would regulate that and monitor it a little bit to see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something in relationship to that?
Yeah, go ahead. Robin?
I have actually been told by a couple of people who ride bikes all the time, they ride with groups and clubs, that they won't be using the bike lanes and that they actually don't obey the traffic laws, and that they won't be. So, I'll just throw that out there. They said they scan the road ahead, and if there's no traffic, they do just go.
So, I guess my question for Mr. Connerd is, was there an officer there that let them go through the light?
No.
Okay. So, I have been told more than once by the chief, the police chief, that we do, in fact, and have, in fact, stopped folks on bikes that are not obeying the laws, the traffic laws. And so, I will remind them to continue to do that. Not aware that they have been ignoring it. It is something like anything else, you have to see it before you can cite somebody or warn them it's officer discretion. As far as somebody admitting to you that they disobey the law, I really don't know how to answer that unless you'd like to name names, and then we can contact them and tell them that they might not want to do that anymore. I don't know what to say.
I get that it's a general feeling among bikers that that's just how it works.
They go by lines of the bike, put a foot down, and they go off. It's not like a car, you're working, just be on the side of the road.
Madam President.
Thank you. Was there anything further, Robin? Mr. Turewilleger?
Being involved with the Mayor's Council on Bikes, I would ask us not to create generalities by a few who may have said things that probably are not the most prudent things to say. There are those who do slide, but there's an awful lot of others who are trying to There are those who do slide, but there's an awful lot of others who are trying to set good examples, not only for themselves but for their kids. You can't control everybody, but there are, there are people out there who understand biking safety.
Thank you. Good point. Any other comments from the audience?
Good evening. My name is Mickey Hammer, 1160 Red Maple Drive. I was here two weeks ago raising concern about some flooding in our neighborhood. I was told there was going to be some investigations done, and there'd be an update, and I was wondering if there was an update.
Mr. Titterington, do you want to respond or do you want to go to?
Sure. I know that we've been looking into it with the engineer. The developer is scheduled to televise the storm drain to see if there's any additional blockage in there. I know we did look at the sewer, the sewer end, and I believe it has been capped correctly, and so, we just continue to monitor it. Choice one, I believe, is the engineer still ensuring their calculations are correct, and I think they've done some shooting of elevations to make sure that what was drawn up, in fact, what the contractor did on the site. So, the only thing that remains now to do is to review the stormwater video when we, when we receive it and make sure that everything is clear.
So, site elevations have been, have been shot? Or not?
Jill, if you, if you want to talk specifically about?
Well, one of the reasons we haven't got back to is because we haven't videoed the, well, when I say we, we're talking about developer hasn't videoed the storm sewer yet, but we are waiting on choice one to get back to us, to talk to us about some low-lying areas, one being just south of that, of your intersection right there. So, there's two things that we're waiting on, and since we didn't really have any information back, that's one of the reasons we didn't get back to you. So, two things that occur. Is that clear? Kind of, I was kind of going on what Patrick was just saying.
Yeah. Do you have any timeline as to when they'll be doing that work?
We're expecting videoing, the storm videoing, to occur in the next two weeks, and then I just need to follow back up with choice one to see what they've figured out about that intersection. Okay?
Yep. One other thing was, I'd asked last week about, is there a possibility of a moratorium on some other lots being developed at this time? You said you didn't think that legally you could do that. Do you have a definitive yes we can or no we can, or you still think?
Well, it's not, it's not a matter of thinking. I think at this point, we need to know what the engineers come back with and what the televising comes back with. If there, if there are issues in either one of those cases that need to be resolved, then we would discuss that with the law director and see what we can do.
My concern is, the lot directly next to mine, they're getting ready to start digging. So, is it going to create more of a problem, and can it be kind of waited until we get more information? Is that a possibility?
So, the other thing that we addressed with choice one is that we talked to them in looking at the aerials that we received and the pictures that we received, so there is a concern about the intersection, the Red Maple and Swan Way intersection and the elevation there. I asked them specifically about the lots and how some of the houses are built up higher than the others, and they said truly that doesn't, that won't affect, like, that shouldn't affect you guys getting, you guys shouldn't get flooded because of that. The water will come off. It'll go in the side yards. It'll go to the back. I think really, right now, with what is going on with your guys' yard and the big rain in July 23rd, is that it has stuff, it has a lot to do with the earth being cleared upstream of you, and so, nothing was slowing the water down, and it was an immense amount of rain in a short amount of time. And so, our storm sewers aren't designed for that, nor are any storm sewers designed for that in the city. So, we can talk a little bit more offline, but when I specifically brought up to them saying, "Well, these houses are lower and these houses are higher, and, you know, what, what's going on?" Like, I'm concerned about that, and they said, "No, there's nothing to be concerned about."